Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the July 11, 2011, Goffstown Board of Selectmen meeting. First order is Pledge of Allegiance. All rise please. Thank you. And Steve, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business will be the acceptance of the corrections of the public and non-public minutes of 6:27:11.
Motion to accept with a correction. What corrections?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Okay, corrections. Dave?
Next, the paragraph, starting Chairman Davanza, second from the bottom. The second line where it says, "Selectmen Pierce said it's..." Delete the word "not." I said, "It is measurable."
Thank you, Captain. Okay, anything else? Seeing no other corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Staining? It's unanimous. Next order of business is announcements, and I don't believe we have any announcements unless any individuals selecting do. Seeing none. Next thing will be a public comment. We're in a few minutes early, and I don't see any members of the public here. I do see Chief O'Brien, and I do see our esteemed GTV operator, Andrew. If you, any, either of you two want to make a public comment, you're welcome. If not, our next appointment is 6:30 with the fire chief. I don't know if you have anybody else coming, Chief, but if you want to proceed, we will.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Received notice from the Algonquin Power Company, the company that runs and manages and operates the two hydroelectric power dams here in town, is wishing to donate an automatic external defibrillator to the fire department. The approximate value of that defibrillator is approximately $2,300. With that, we like to accept that because it would help put automatic, or we call AEDs, in our frontline response vehicles. Right now, we have some aging equipment that we're contending with in that field, and this would go to good use on one of our frontline engines.
Chief, how many of these units do we have? Would we have with this one?
With this one, would be, we'd have actually four, four AEDs in the department. And again, two of them are at that lifespan where they're becoming more expensive to upkeep and maintain than to, if we were to buy new.
Okay, and we have one in each ambulance?
We actually have monitored defibrillators in each ambulance. They're more comprehensive where we can put somebody on the monitor and see what the rhythm is looking like and do a few other things, like be a pacemaker or do a twelve EKG.
So this would not be replacing any of those? This is a different thing?
No, no, this would just replace the smaller, more of its, all of its uses is if somebody was down with a heart attack.
Right.
We could put them on and defibrillate if needed.
Right, okay. Okay, does, anybody have any questions, or the Chief?
No, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from Algonquin Power for the AED device as no public hearing is needed. It's under $5,000.
Yep. Second by, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And I think that it would be good if we drafted a letter thanking them for their kind donation.
Absolutely.
Signed by the board.
I'll help Derek out with that.
Okay, great.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Yes.
At seven o'clock is when we have a public hearing for the other New England Heart Institute device. I assume that you're gonna, are you sticking around or?
I'll be sticking around. I'll be back here.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chief. The next item is the, since we can't have the public hearing until seven o'clock, we'll move up to the town administrator report, and I'll turn that over to the assistant town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have this week's meeting schedule. The consensus folder has the warrant, the AP warrant, employee status reports. The appointment papers in there were prepared by the town clerk based on the June 27 meeting. The job descriptions from the fire department with the changes requested, cemetery deeds, and assessors' recommendation.
Motion to accept the consensus folder.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Point of order, would the chairman actually like to do a separate motion for the assessors' recommendation?
For what?
Would the chairman like to do a separate motion for the assessors' recommendation?
Second page.
Really wasn't in the consensus folder. It's its own item.
Okay. The assessors' recommendation is in the consensus folder?
It's really...
It really is, and I shouldn't have included that. It's separate from the consensus folder.
Oh, okay. But let me just, so actually, the only thing that's incorrect in what we have is that motion needed on the consensus folder at the bottom of that.
It should say motion needed.
On the assessors' recommendation.
Right.
Correct, okay. That's why I was asking, okay, so assessors' recommendation, then, Derek.
So yes, you have an assessors' recommendation on abatement request.
Motion to accept the assessors' recommendation on map thirty-eight lot three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. You have a, two highway safety grant applications from Chief Sullivan, and Chief Sullivan is requesting the board's authorization to submit the applications and authorization for the chairman, the selectman chairman, to sign the applications.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Motion to have the chairman sign both highway safety grant applications.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. You have an application for energy audits for municipal buildings. About two weeks ago, I was notified of a program through the New Hampshire Office of Energy and Planning. They'd recently been awarded some federal funds to do about thirty comprehensive energy audits, and seeking to submit this application on the behalf of the town, seeking comprehensive energy audits of Fire Station Eighteen, the police department, and Town Hall. Those were all identified in the 2009 energy inventory of the town as some of the structures in need of significant study.
Okay, I have a question for you. When you're talking about the 2009, are you talking about the one that the fellow that had come in and done some...
He briefed this board.
Well, there was, there was two different, there was two different, there was a 2009 that was done through...
Wasn't it an energy audit of some sort?
There was an energy inventory of the town.
Right.
There was a comprehensive energy audit of Station Seventeen, Fire Station Seventeen, and then there was another audit, it was a partial audit of Station Eighteen, the police department, and Town Hall. But this is, this is seeking a comprehensive of those three buildings because that opens up some avenues for federal and state funding. Usually, that's a requirement for those if we were to go forward and seek energy grants.
The only reason I'm asking the questions that I have is a little, just wondering if there was, if there's any issue with the two since we had some type of an energy audit, and I don't know if anything ever developed of that, and now we're gonna have another energy audit.
Speaking with one of the, a couple of the energy committee people in town, I know it's not a, it's a kind of a committee off on its own, volunteers that are doing that. They've said, though, the studies that have done in the past will actually support this application because this is the next step in the process to get a more in-depth study and recommendations.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the submission of this application prior to the July fifteenth deadline by the, I guess, for the chair to sign it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. The Parker Station Historic Preservation Consultant, at the June 27 meeting, the board voted five zero zero to proceed with John Milner Associates, and we have received a signed copy of the agreement back from John Milner, and I just asked for authorization for the chairman to sign that agreement.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
We have a request from the DPW director to post labor vacancy, laborer vacancy. Are you seeking that authorization?
I would like to hold this one, to have Carl here, and also to find out what the ramifications are with this retirement downshifting, because if we have to come up with monies to cover retirement, and we've got six months to do it, this may be something that we have to consider, and since we don't know what the total costs are yet for the retirement downshift, I think we gotta wait before we do this.
Well, the only concern that I have is this time of the year right now with all the paving and everything else, labor...
And I understand all that, but I mean, I, my big concern is that if we have to come up with a hundred, $150,000, where's this money gonna come from? And I'd like to wait at least a week till we get those figures, you know? We wouldn't even be in a position, I mean, this just was finalized due to an FMLA expiration, so I don't think one week is gonna kill us, but we don't, we just don't know how much, how much this downshift is gonna cost us, so, and where we're gonna come up with potentially hundred, $150,000. I don't even, we were told during the whole legislative session that there would be no downshifting of the retirement cost in this fiscal year. That did not happen. Whether there was some fluke in how the legislation was written, I don't know, and I'm not really quite sure, but...
Okay, can, let me ask, David, are you, you have any input on this from the department?
I would support waiting a week. The vacancy in a public works position occurred just three or four days ago, and we can certainly take another week to authorize refilling it if that would be, you know, the best decision at that time.
Okay. I think during the week, though, this, Derek, do you have?
Well, I, I know Selectmen Gross had concerns about their time. I do have some information that on the retirement to discuss in the budget, so I don't know if you want to push this matter till later on, or I could, because Linda did calculate what those figures are for the rest of 2011, so we do have, and I know, I believe that information was passed along to Selectman Campisano.
Okay, wait, go ahead, David.
In that case, be best just to receive further information later in this agenda, and we'll come back to this item.
All right, well, let's, let's hold off on this until we have that discussion, okay?
Yep.
Is that later on this evening? Yeah.
Well, yeah, you had, I think, the last item under the TA report was budget development because there was a question about the non-union wages, but I also do have that retirement information.
All right, thank you.
So, okay, we'll just hold off on that. Okay.
The next item is the Main Street Program has submitted a request for an additional crosswalk, and you also have the DPW director's comments on that request. This came in on Friday. Currently, there are three crosswalks on Main Street that change occurred in 2008, and they are recommending or requesting an additional crosswalk at Flanders Court adjacent to Vicster's and also right next to Town Hall at Twenty Main Street. And again, Carl's said this is an ideal time to do it if the board of selectmen deems it appropriate because they are currently developing plans and bids, or specs to go out to bid.
I, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with, I just, I took a look at it, and it makes a sense, and it makes sense. There's no, we don't lose any parking spaces. There are a lot of people who do cross there due to the two restaurants, so I'm in support of it. The one thing that I would like for us to also consider is actual marking of parking spaces, because every, you know, I, I come to the village quite a bit, and because they're not marked, like Town Hall, in front of Town Hall, I believe you can fit three spaces, but depending on how people park, you get two. Same thing in front of Sawyer's. The way people are parked, you don't get as many parking spots because people don't know to park between two white lines, and I think we lose three and four or five spots because people just don't know where to put their vehicles, so...
Well, let's, let's do this, then. Let's just, Derek's heard that. Let, go ahead, with the request for the crosswalk, to go back to the DPW and PD and see about that, because there's possibly, and I'm not saying that there is, but there might be issues that if you start marking the parking spaces, then you have to start putting the space for the parking, the space between the parking space and the crosswalk. So I don't know if that's...
That's, that's already done.
That's currently being done.
It's already done.
That twenty-foot buffer is being...
Well, the only point is, is that there might be, there might be a reason why, we might, just, just to, I mean, if it's something that can be done without any consequences, that's fine.
I know when we talk, I talked with Carl on Friday, we went out and viewed it, and he said, given the twenty-foot marking for the crosswalk, you might lose a little bit of, you know, a few feet on the Vicster's side, but on this side of the road, you shouldn't because that whole area is no parking currently now.
Because of the fire hydrant.
Because of the fire hydrant right there.
Okay, one thing I wanna make sure, too, is that if we go forward with this, we aren't gonna get the businesses in here complaining that they're lost, that they lost parking spaces, because what I'm hearing is that this is to help people, that a benefit, we're looking at this as a benefit to these businesses also for people crossing. I don't wanna try to do something and find out that they're not happy with it, that's all. Do you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, I vaguely remember when we talked about delineating actual parking spaces, that there was some discussion that that may limit, that there were times you may have more, if the vehicles are smaller, you may actually get more parking in a set area than if you actually delineated, say, three spots. There are times you may get four cars, but I understand what you're saying. Sometimes if someone parks halfway in between two, you lose some.
You know, that's...
I have a comment for Derek to bring to Public Works when you have this discussion. Many times, there's, this is in front of the trestle going towards the gas station. Many times, there's so many cars right there that vehicles can't turn out of the gas station after they refuel. So in, in marking those parking spaces, be aware of not extending it, not extending a space blocking an exit from the gas station.
Understood.
Just a question. How many crosswalks are we gonna have?
Four.
I mean, no, when we start from the, from the, from the, from the mountain road, there's one there, correct? Mountain road.
There's one at Cumberland Farms that crosses over.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have one there.
Saint Lawrence.
Saint Lawrence.
Yes.
And then the next one's going to be?
Right before you hit the...
House.
Right at House.
At House. So, and then the next one is going to be at Flanders, no, it'll be at the gas station.
The next one's at the gas station.
Station. So I'm just trying to do the count here, so we're gonna have one, I mean, how many, give me the total number of crosswalks to go this, this one mile.
The one that's been removed is, is at the head of Church Street.
I mean, I, I understand the safety...
There was one there, two years.
Okay, one at a time.
Okay, but I'm trying to guess, I was just trying to get to the point going down this exercise of how many crosswalks we have in that one, in that, in that short span of road there is incredible. I'm just, and it, and that's not even counting the ones on the side streets. I mean, the whole village is, I think there's probably more crosswalks than there is road at this point in time. I mean, I'm saying that exaggerating, but I'm just saying, seems to be a lot of crosswalks. And I know when most people come into town, at least when I'm driving to town, I'm looking for anyone who parks, and I'm giving them the time and the space to get across the street and do what they need to do. I think most people are very courteous about that, and I'm just saying that we have a lot of crosswalks, and every time we add a crosswalk, there's more maintenance, there's more work, and just, just putting that out there, there's, there's gotta be ten at least, when you count the side streets.
Comment.
At least ten. I have to go through and count it.
Comment is noted.
Never seen so many crosswalks.
We're all set with crosswalks?
Yep.
What direction would you like me to give the DPW?
Well, go ahead.
Because he's, he's making...
No, no, go ahead with the crosswalk.
Okay.
I will second the motion that dealt with the crosswalk.
Right, I mean, my, yes, I made a motion on proceeding with the crosswalk.
Right, I thought Nick seconded.
Oh.
No.
So we had a discussion, there was no second?
I guess so.
Losing control here.
Yeah, okay, that's what happens when three of you talk at one time. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, and so it's four, one, zero. And you're gonna find out about possibly delineating them.
Delineating, I'll get your information.
If there are concerns, then it would be, bring those concerns back to the board. I mean, because what Nick brought up is one thing, you know, that issue, and then we'll have to maybe make another decision.
All right. Thank you. Crosswalk number twenty-four. And then the last item is a carryover from the June 27 meeting, again, the conversation relative to non-union wages, and then again, I do have some information about the retirement increase that the town is seeing.
We'll take that first, I guess. Right?
Yeah, we will.
All right. When it was budgeted in last year, the, the first half of the year, they planned on the state paying 25% for fire and police, and then they, when it was budgeted by, when Jan and Linda threw those numbers together, they, because there was a promise to return to 35%, that's the number that they used for July first through, and as you...
Really?
Yeah.
I thought that we kept it at 25.
Originally, we thought we had, it wasn't, it went to 35.
Went to 35.
That we budgeted?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Oh, so we budgeted 35%?
Yep. Bet the state would cover 35, yeah.
We assumed that revenue.
Okay, yeah, well, I guess, yeah, that surprised me a little bit, too.
So what, what the total works out to for July through December, with the state paying 0%, and the town picking that up, is about $155,000 over that six-month period. Now, that does not account for, in the state budget, there was 3.5 million that the state would pay to retirement system, and the retirement system would disperse that money. The New Hampshire retirement system has not figured out how they're going to disperse that yet, so it does not account for that, but that's basically, you know, what it, what it boils down to is that $155,000.
So we, from what I've read in the paper, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, but you can't always go with that in the paper.
I know that, but what, what Derek just stated was that in two to three months, the retirement system is going to then give us new rates, but we don't know what those new rates are, they haven't figured out the formula. So, because they're getting a greater contribution from the employee, which is then in turn going to offset this one, some of this 155, we don't know how much.
When is that gonna be, take effect?
I was told...
The new rates?
I was told within the next two to three months.
The rates are out, they're already paying the new rates.
No, I know that, revised rates.
The revised rates they're paying as of July first.
Well, the retirement system has to recalculate based on the legislation.
Right, it's all actuarial, right, right.
And they, they have basically said as soon as possible, but I think, you know, two to three months.
So will these recalculated rates be retroactive to July first?
They, I have not seen any clear direction on how they're going to do that, if they're going to do it retroactively, or they're going to do some rate for the remainder of this year to balance things out.
I was under the impression that, that they were gonna be retroactive, but it was not going to compensate entirely for this one loss of, you know, this 155, so...
Be on top of it?
No, I, I think, I think what we're gonna see is that there'll be a contribution from the retirement system, and they'll come back and they'll say, okay, you didn't, it's not 155, but it might be 100, it might be 75,000, it might be 50,000, you know, but it's, so it won't be 155, but it's not gonna be zero. You know, we're not, we're not gonna walk away from this and not have to contribute anything. That's just my, my understanding of it.
I, I agree with your understanding, and I, my concern is the time is of the essence, because 155 over six months is a lot different than 155 over three months, and the longer we wait for those answers, the shorter period of time we have to make up that money, and it gets difficult.
Yeah. Hit those.
And the only thing I would say that is, in 2010 and 2009, that the budget surplus, whether it would be unspent lines or unanticipated revenue, has been more than the 155, so, you know, if you follow that trend, you should be able to cover it, but again, that's, that's assuming everything's either other than your spend or...
Right. But the, the other issue is that every year, we get a budget that's tighter and tighter and tighter, and that we get closer and closer to that margin, so I don't, I don't like to defer things, but I think maybe another week for us to get some, some, some good numbers. Mr. Chair, I think we're gonna need, in the short term, some revenue, where are we at with revenue projections, you know, whether it be motor vehicles, you know, you name it, to see where we're, where we're tracking, because if we only have, I think the 155 probably represents the worst-case scenario for the retirement. However, it's still 155, and we have to come up with it.
Okay.
And then what are our options, you know?
Yeah. Eric, do you feel comfortable starting on putting together some revenue projections?
I think we could. I think, you know, reading the last meeting, Sue was advising more towards wait till September first, because then you would see the full impact of the state budget. If we do the revenue tracking numbers now, you might not see the full impact of the state budget and some of the, the changes that they've made.
The only, the only potential problem there is that the longer that we wait, the less time we have to make a, make a difference. That's, that's the bigger issue.
And, and the difficulty with that is if we're gonna wait till September, then oh, we're gonna wait on this laborer until September first, because that's basically, if we're gonna wait for September to do that, then...
Well, actually, the laborer would not be, a DPW position would not be affected, because again, this is the, this is the state downshifting their percentage of fire and police.
No, no, I understand, but we have to make up the money.
They'll come from anywhere in our budget.
Right, so by not filling this position, that, what would be expended for payroll and going into the other expenses, which they hear that we could put towards that 155, that's, that's the problem.
Okay, understood.
You know, and I know this is a tough time for public works, we have all the outside work, and it's, it's a mad time, you know, so I think that's, you know, we don't expect you to be able to pull rabbits out of the hat and come up with numbers that don't come out until September first, but at least, you know, that's what we're, we need to get a handle on.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay. So, go ahead.
You know, the other issue, and I, and I don't, I don't think any of us know the answer to this, but we were told repeatedly that there would be no downshifting of these costs in this, in this fiscal year, and then I've also read that there were some issues with regard to the legislation where the intent was that it would not be downshifted, but the way that it was written downshifted it. And I'm, I guess, whether, whether it's from the Municipal Association or someone else, like, and I know in Manchester, the mayor said, I'm not paying anything, and there's a penalty, right, for doing that, so he's not making any payments, the mayor's not making payments to the, to the retirement system, because he was told that there would no, there would be no downshifting.
I think there's some semantics involved as well.
Correct.
Because they're, they're not saying it's, they're not downshifting costs, they're just not paying a subsidy.
Well, I understand, well...
Which is, you know, it's a semantic, but, you know, technically, it's, they're just no longer paying the subsidy.
Right, but if there was a technical error in the legislation, or that, you know, the intent was to do one thing, but it was written another, I would like to know what maybe NHMA's position on that, or where they stand. Are they taking any action on any legal action, or, because some, I think some cities might be taking legal action, or school districts.
I know the final legislative bulletin, they did not do an analysis of the entire bill.
Right.
And then you're, you're waiting for the final legislative bulletin to come out this summer that might shed a little bit more light.
Right, that is, right, so as soon as I saw that, I didn't delve into everything because it wasn't finalized.
I'm just saying that we had a legislative meeting with, with many of our state reps who assured us that that would not happen, and that was clearly the intent going into it, and then it didn't happen. So, you know, maybe that's something that... So, you know, maybe that's something that, you know, I'll, I'll call a couple of them to see what, what happened, you know, I'm just curious.
Okay. Next item.
And then the only other item that was on there, and I don't know if you'd, you know, in light of this conversation, was the, relative to the non-union wage increase, whether it be, you know, the, the steps, or COLA, or some combination. Because again, the Finance Department is looking to send out budget figures this, end of this week to department heads, so they can begin developing their budget. So Finance is looking for some direction.
Is that an issue, is that an item that they can, at this point, develop their budgets without? And then once that decision is made here, those numbers just get plugged in?
Yeah, we've done that in the past.
Because it's really, if, let's just use numbers, let's say, right, let's just say it's a three percent increase. We just provide, Finance provides that three percent increase to each of the departments, they plug it in. But they should be able to complete the rest of their budget. Because I think we have some other issues that we have to.
Right.
Look at before we make that determination, which may take some time.
Okay. The only thing it might make a little difficult if they're looking to do the, you know, the, no increase, and, but I guess they'll have to.
Right, I mean, I think, if I could, as Budget Committee rep, that, the, the last vote of the Budget Committee was to bring forward a budget, or the guidance to, from the Budget Committee was to bring forward a budget scenario which will present a, a, no increase in the tax rate, okay? And then to justify any deviations from that. So, I think from a department head standpoint, you know, what would that budget look like? And that, maybe that's what you're alluding to, is that if you, if hypothetically, there were to be a, a cost of living, or step, or combination of cost of living and step, and it represented hypothetically a three percent, they were to plug that in, what else would they have to then cut to achieve?
Right.
To achieve that, right? Knowing that we've had, I think, three years, I think, of level funding in most of these lines, if I'm not mistaken.
So if I understand, Selectman Commissar's discussion there, it would be best at this point in time, rather than specifically state COLA or steps for non-union, just put a placeholder increase for non-union wages, be it three or four percent. And then we can resolve how that is being utilized, you know, broken down at a later point. And, and so, if that is what we would desire, I would like that the cumulative effect of whatever that would be, to be the worst-case situation of sixty-four thousand dollars. What, whatever percentage that would be for non-union.
So, so what I understand is you're saying, have Finance develop the numbers based on the, on the worst-case scenario?
On, on this worst-case scenario.
But not.
It's a placeholder.
Okay.
And if.
I think we have to have that discussion before we. I'm not, I'm personally not comfortable with that, myself. Because I think that it, there's two issues at play. One, we are negotiating with two bargaining units, that's one. I don't think we necessarily have to do it, I don't think it's, it's a sum of money that we could easily add and make a decision in September. You know, or right in the eleventh hour, we can add these numbers in, and I, I, things are gonna change, and I, I just, and then from there, I don't, I think it also sets an expectation maybe amongst our employees that they're gonna, it's gonna be X because it's in the budget. And then if we were to trim that, due to a variety of different circumstances, we look like the bad guys, so I, I, and I'm okay with making tough decisions, but I'd rather not give anybody any false hope by putting in worst-case scenarios and trim back. I'd rather just, let's keep going until we get to that time where we have to make a decision, and then we plug in a number, you know?
Well, that's what we started to discuss, was what would be an appropriate number to plug in.
I don't know, we know that.
I, I hear, I hear you saying zero, well, that's not, that's too extreme.
No, I'm not saying zero, I'm just saying, as of now, let's not plug a number in. We're gonna plug a number in probably, and, so it is zero, but, but we will change. So I'd, I'd rather go up from zero than go down from four something percent.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there are several, several factors.
For a variety of reasons, which I alluded to.
Right, a variety of reasons, so I think that's the best bet. So, if that's the consensus of the board, that's what we'll have Derek do?
What does everybody else think?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just gonna make my statement. I, I know the part you spoke about, there were negotiations with, with two, with two, with two of the unions. I think this is totally separate from that. This is, in other words, the non-union positions are totally separate. I don't think they should be hinging or waiting on what's going on with, with, with other negotiations. That's why they're a separate union, they decided to go that way, that's one piece. The second thing is, as you go forward and you're preparing these budgets, every, each year that we've seen these budgets, they've still been, we've still had to, had to make adjustments to them, trying to fit into a, a, a flat, you know, a, a, you know, a flat, a flat, a flat budget. So I think you have to either decide you're gonna work this number in, or you're not. I don't think you can, you know, coming in at the last minute and trying to, to adjust it, I think is, is, is poor planning. And I'll give you another good example, I, I was at the DPW this, this week, just to drop in, just to look around, and they were working on the trash truck. And I was looking at the trash truck, and I said, oh, I said, I said, you guys are fixing the spare. And he looks at me, says, no, this is not the spare, this is the frontline truck. And, and, and at that point, you know, the conversation kinda took place regarding, what did we do last year with the trash truck? We said, hey, we'll put it out as an article, and we, I think we've seen so far how we've gone with articles and equipment. And so the question is, you know, it's not just the idea of salaries and other things, what are we gonna do with these, with a piece like that, that honestly, I don't think would pass as an article? Again, it's, it's, tends to fail, and we've gotta look at how we get these other things in the budget. So I think just waiting and seeing, and going through this process, I think you're better, I think you're better to go forward a little bit and say, you know what, let's see what this looks like now.
Well, I don't think that's really adding any, I understand what you're saying, Steve, and I don't think that at this point, though, we'd have to have an entire discussion on that. And I, I, I don't, I don't think we're prepared at this point. And I think that probably, we're looking, we're in the middle of, of July. And six weeks from now is the beginning of September, that's when we're looking at some of these other items. But I think that maybe this is something that we'll just, we'll just keep, keep an eye on it for the next few weeks. Scott?
I don't, I, I guess, in support of what you're saying, I don't see how this is any different than, say, health insurance, where we wait to plug in a number for health insurance. It's, it's salary and it's health insurance, and they're part of the total compensation. And to do it right now, in, in the first week or second week of July, where we could very easily just plug it in, and I'm not saying that we're gonna know more potentially, but there's really, I don't know, this sense of urgency to put it in right now.
I'm not saying there's a sense of urgency, and that health insurance is something that's gonna happen no matter what. Is that fair? In other words, whatever, you know, when, when those numbers come in.
Not necessarily, we've been managing it over the last couple of years.
We managed to extent, but it's not, it's not an option.
Well, I, here's, if I may, can I interrupt you for a second? This is where maybe I differ, in my opinion, from everybody else here, is that the health insurance and the salaries go hand in hand, because they're part of the whole compensation package. We have not yet talked, a year or two ago, we talked about different plans, where there'll be different contributions, different deductibles, et cetera. And because of that, we are able to lower, you know, our healthcare costs, you know, from, that the town pays. We have yet to have any of those discussions. And I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna truly be good in terms of our budgeting process, I wanna know, again, if we're talking total compensation, what other plans are out there? What other adjustments can be made that may, may result in cost savings to the town, may result in a cost savings to the employee, I, I don't know. But I know that last time we did this, there were, there were some cost savings. Some of our bargaining units agreed to go that route, some didn't. But it's all hand in hand, and sometimes, if you want, if you're gonna just say, oh, we're gonna just accept a fifteen percent increase in healthcare, then, then does that necessarily mean that you can, that you're gonna get a X amount in compensation? And sometimes it means that you have to give and take on both, because they're both one, I think. So that's where I think we're premature. I, I'd rather see both, the healthcare, what savings we could see, if, if any. If we can't see any, then we have to make a decision there, but we haven't even talked about healthcare, and they go hand in hand.
I think we're going forward with zero then at this point?
Right.
I mean, can we get some information from Health Trust? Should we be shopping for other carriers? Seeing what their rates may be? I mean, I know, every time we do this, and we start to do, oh, it's too late. Well, maybe it's not too late to look on the, on the, to shop and see what it, what it would be for another carrier. You know, for another entity to, to, to price our business. I know other towns are doing it, they're not married to Health Trust.
I agree with that, I mean, we, and we spoke about it last year, and it was.
Yeah, but it was too late.
And, and all, and when you, when you look in, and you look at other avenues, either it's going to lead, lead, lead to a benefit, or it's gonna lead to the, or it's gonna, or you'll be able to sit back and say confidently that you're, you're going down the right track with the current package.
All right, so Derek, you look into that?
All right. And that's all that I have under the TA report.
That's all under the TA report, okay, so.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. DPW, did you want Carl to come in on his request for the position?
Well, if Carl, if Carl, let me put it to this way, if Carl wants to post the position, then I think he should. Okay, but just, just let him know what the, what's concern is, or they, you know, I'm sure they.
He wants to post the position, he should come in.
Or he should post it.
No, 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 he wanted approval for it, so we haven't given him approval, we're holding off. So if he wants that position posted.
He should come in.
He should come in.
Understood, okay.
Right, so we'll have to, oh, okay, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
If he wants that position posted, he should.
He, no, he should come in.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it's kinda lost with that one, why would we, why would, if we're holding it, why would we have him come in to discuss the posting?
Because if he needs that position, if he wants that position, because he needs that position, because I understand how public works is in this time of year.
The, the point he has to be prepared to discuss is what would happen if that position remained.
How bad he needs that position.
I understand that.
Not, not to state the obvious, I would assume that if he's asking to post the position, he needs the position.
Well, the need to come in and justify it is basically what, okay, from our perspective at this point. Okay, we're not, we're not saying no, but we had a concern with that hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar figure, what it's gonna actually be, and we were gonna come up with the rest of the money, and that's what we're gonna have to balance. Okay, so Vince Selectman's discussion? Any new business?
I have old.
Well, we didn't get to it yet.
Oh.
Two fifty.
Let me know.
See, no new business, we'll go to old business, you have something, Scott?
Yeah, I, I almost forgot about this, but I didn't, I remembered it. Last year, and I know that we, we talked about this whole thing with the town charter, and the town manager, and all that of the stuff. We said, you know what, it was too late in the game, we didn't study it. And, you know, it was something that I, I felt, you know, pretty strongly about, that we should consider a town manager as an interim step. And obviously, I think, it's, it's July, and, you know, next, you know, I, so, if the will of the board is to, is to take a look at it harder, then we should take those steps now. If the will of the board is to say, you know what, nope, I think, I think it's a great system that we have now, then I'm willing to, you know, ditch the idea. But I just think if we're gonna do it, and we're gonna study it, if there's enough, you know, support for it, then we should investigate the pros and the cons, and have that discussion well in advance, and let people know, or have hearings, or, you know, public information sessions about it. And if not, then we scrap it. But I just didn't wanna wait until, you know, November, December, that, oh, yeah, and then, it was an issue that came up, and we decided to, to hold it, you know, for discussions.
Okay, so then why don't we put that on the agenda for next week? Okay?
Okay.
And any specific information you're looking for?
Well, I think we all, I think we all know, I think we know that a town manager, form of government, is simply a voted town meeting, there is no change in the charter, that, you know, if you were to go to a.
It's to adopt the town manager statute, is basically what.
If you were to do something, anything other than that, you would have to then create a charter commission, and which we, we tried, we attempted, I don't know, six, seven years ago.
Okay, Nick?
I think what would be helpful is a pros and con. Something, one sheet that had town manager, town administrator, and the differences between the two, just a, a quick reference sheet, based on the RSAs of what, it's very easy to just look at.
Well, when you're asking that, are you asking Derek to go through it and come up with his pros and cons? Or where do you expect them to get the pros and cons?
Can we get that from the Municipal, the Government Center?
If, if it's available. If it's available.
We can see what is available out there.
Well, we know that, just one example, like, right now, this board retains the ability, I guess, to hire and terminate, okay? Under the town manager form, the town manager is the one that does that. So that's, that's not my opinion, your opinion, that's the statute. The other thing, so I don't have any problem, I, I think it is fairly black and white as to that. I would also say that if we're doing that, if you wouldn't also, could we also include, which I know is readily available, what, what towns that have a pop that are in the top fifteen or twenty in terms of populations, that's, that is where, have a manager, a mayor, an alderman, et cetera. Because I, I think what I've seen is that Goffstown is, I think, is the largest town that still has a board of, of Selectmen.
Fourteenth largest, I think.
Yeah, thirteenth or fourteenth largest, and, and we have a board of Selectmen. And there are other smaller municipalities that have town councils, mayors, you name it, so.
Now you're talking about a change of the charter.
No, I, no. And I'm not suggesting that, all I'm saying is that it would be, it would, it would, I think it would demonstrate to us, if we have not seen it, where, where are these top fifteen, or twenty towns, and what form of governments do they have, that's all.
Well, the, the only difficulty I have with that is because you're looking at that, and you're gonna come up with the same, well, look, all those other towns are like that, so we should be like that. Well, Goffstown's unique.
Well, I know where you stand, Phil.
No, you don't know where I stand.
I do, but I'm just saying that.
I'm just trying, I'm just telling you, you know, you, you're looking at this, and it's like a bunch of lemmings, because everybody else is that way, that's the way we should be.
No, I, I guess where I'm going at, is, driving at is, is there a ti, is there a need for change? And when Goffstown had a population of five thousand, or ten thousand, or twelve thousand, did this form of government work, was it at its, at its most efficient? And now that we're approaching eighteen, soon to be twenty thousand people, I'm sure in the next five to, say, ten years, is that the mo, is this the most efficient form of government, or to be, or would be better served?
Well, it depends on what you mean by efficient, okay? Looking at a person who's sitting in a political office that wants to make changes, the best efficiency thing is some way to make the changes where people that are out there don't have the, that aren't gonna be involved to slow the process down, okay? But a person who wants to look at it and say, the efficiency is, the most important thing is to keep the power with people. You have two different perspectives, just keep that in mind, we're just talking about efficiency.
We can talk about it next week.
I know, that's why I said, put it on here again.
Point, counterpoint.
So, yeah, he didn't talk about the two fiftieth, but he brought this up instead, that's why he's not talking about the two fiftieth. That's okay.
That's next, all right?
Probably, old business?
July twenty-third, Roy Park, Ice Cream Socials that we're talking about?
No, you're the one talking, not me. Old business. Committee reports conservation.
Conservation Committee met July fifth. We looked at two sets of plans, the St. Ansem Site Plan Map Three, Lot Forty-One, Three Sixty-Two One, which was removing the existing parking lot and creating green space. The Commission stated they had no issues or concerns with that proposal. And also a lot line adjustment for Map Forty-Three, lots four and five in Riverview Park. And the Commission stated that they had no issues or concerns with that proposed lot line adjustment. So that was sent off to the respective boards. We also had a, a lengthy presentation from Conservation Commission member David Nieman and Ian McSweeney of the Russell Piscata Squawb Watershed Foundation in regards to the Roberts Farm property, four hundred and twenty acres, Map Two, Lot Fifty-Nine. And, um, Mr. McSweeney explained the process. The Conservation Commission is interested in pursuing those, um, development rights, and it's actually a very long process. They're making a, an application to the, um, the Russell Foundation for, well, actually, the first applications to the Farm and Ranchland Protection Program for a hundred and ninety acres, and then they'll be going to the New England Forest Foundation at some point for the remaining acres, but it's about a two-year process. So, it's a fairly lengthy process for them to, um, to complete the whole deal. They're looking all for, um, grant funding and/or donations, private, um, donation money to complete the process. So, they are going forward with that first application, which is the Farm and Ranchland Protection Program. And they're also planning on coming to the board to make a presentation and outline the process for us.
Okay, good. Any questions, Nick? Seeing none, CIP?
CIP met on Thursday, and we've completed all presentations from all town departments, and also school presentations. We started last Thursday on the first round of deliberations on the town side. Next Thursday, Selectman Pierce is kind enough to, um, "I'll be out of town," sit in for me next Thursday. So, that will be more of a, of a fine tuning on the, on the town side. We're looking at roughly, if you're, when you look at the vehicles, they're, you know, the, the needed-
They're snowballing, right?
The, the Packers, and, but we're looking roughly, and then, at about a nine million dollar CIP compared to a million dollars last year. There are some items, there's a one-point-six-million-dollar fire department proposed bond, so that obviously wouldn't be, that'd be a standalone article, and some capital reserve fund items. But for the most part, there are, you know, if you look at each one of these individually, they're needed. You know, and there are items that we've pushed off and pushed off, but it's, it's gonna be a very large CIP bump this year.
Any questions, Nick? Seeing none? Okay, uh, we were told there's no report from the two-fiftieth, or is there?
There is no report, but there is a public service announcement, um, July twenty-third, which will be a week from this Saturday. We will have a ice cream social, it's free ice cream, and, uh, we're also having a concert.
It's music, live music.
Live music, it'll start at six o'clock, and, uh, commence somewhere, I guess, I'm sorry, it'll end sometime after eight o'clock, so.
And the name of the band is?
The Risen, they play sixties, seventies, and eighties cover music, so. Steve, it's right up your alley.
Correct, will you be wearing your Frosty outfit as your-
No, no, so.
For the ice cream for-
Just wanted, also, uh, we've got a lot of, you know, we've got sponsors, obviously, who are helping out. We have, actually, we just, we gotta bring in generators, because there's not enough power at Roy Park. So, DST Electric in, on Elm Street has generously donated some, uh, some generator power. We've also, we have some other, uh, sponsors as well. So, we're Blake's and, uh, the Highwood Village Apartments, and Highland Village.
These generators aren't gonna drown out the fan?
No, they're quiet.
Okay.
Very silent, very quiet. So, and Blake's Ice Cream has also helped us out with the ice cream, so, uh, should be a good time. So, I encourage people to come, bring your lawn chairs, that, that is important, so. And parking may be an issue, so you may have to, you know, walk to get there, because it's very limited. We're gonna park some of the vehicles, uh, in the outfield, um, but, uh, there, there will be some, yeah. There will be some limited parking, so you may have to park elsewhere and walk over.
Okay.
Would you repeat for me the name of the, um, business that donated the generators?
DST.
DST.
Yeah, Electric, Don Tucker.
Okay, um, we don't have a report from the ZBA.
There should be one in your-
Well, yeah, I mean, it's written, it's not, uh, because we don't have anybody that works for that. So, with that, uh, are there any other reports? Seeing none, we'll be finished with that, and, uh, I don't know if there's any other business in here, uh, unless you wanted to take a five-minute break before, uh, the public hearing.
Just, just one quick comment on old business, the, the property at the end of Water Street or Water Road?
Yes.
Yeah, what's, what's the, what's happening with that?
A few, I would say, probably at the end of May, I went to Southern New Hampshire Planning, uh, to request Brownfields funds for that. Um, but they are really focused on the redevelopment of commercial property, so, uh, that did not get approved for that. And, uh, the state of New Hampshire, DES, does have some funds for investigations. If we got to the point that we found, uh, some type of oil containment in, inside the structure, or, or, um, on the property, they would come down and investigate. If they found any, they would clean it up at their cost, they have funds for the oil remediation and cleanup. But, uh, I'd have to talk to Sue and see where we had left it, because I had kinda left it with her, that, you know, Brownfields wouldn't pay to go in and study.
What was the cost at moment base to remove the, the structures there? Do we know that?
It was in our, it was in our, our, um-
I know, I'm just trying to-
I don't know off the top of your head, it-
Eight thousand or more?
The pair?
Maybe a little more. It was, it wasn't cheap.
And, and I would say the only, uh, thing that would probably complicate Two Water Road is the access, and also being that close to the water, it's, it's almost a straight drop right down into the water, that you'd have to do quite a bit of, you know, site, site work as you were doing it to ensure nothing went into the river.
So, where does that leave us? It's not getting removed right now.
I don't see that as anything difficult, more, in fact, I look at that one as being easier than the ones that we removed already. I'm just, as you, when you talk about access-
Do you own that property?
No.
No, the, the issue was, and the reason I went for the Brownfields money was to have it studied before the town would tax deed it. Because there is a period of ninety days, you know, that you, you couldn't turn around and-
Because that's where we left it.
You may open, the town would open itself up to-
Because either we're gonna retain it, or sell it to the butter or someone, et cetera, and so, I'm just wondering, so, with that being said, where are we going at this point? In other words, we're just going to be something that's another year down the road they'll look at, I'm just, that's what I'm trying to get to.
I can definitely follow up with Sue and see, you know, um, again, we were trying to get that money to know exactly what was on site before the town took it.
Right, that was the, that was the unknown.
And guess the only other way would be to do a, a more extensive search and try and contact the property owners, which we have had no luck tracking them down, to see if they would waive that, that, that mandatory waiting period. So, you could take the property and immediately, uh, transfer it to another party to clean up. I can come up with some options and bring those back to you.
Thank you.
All right, six fifty-eight, we're on six fifty-nine, we have a seven o'clock public hearing. Might as well come up.
And it's prime, you get up there in a minute.
What?
We're done after this?
Unless you wanna talk about fireworks, or?
The chief is between us and going home.
Pretty much, unless you wanna start talking about something, and then you'll be between us and going home.
This could be a one-hour discussion.
No, I don't think so.
You never know, you never know, okay. We're here, um, to have a public hearing to accept the CPR assist device and related equipment from New England Heart Institute, has approximate value of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, it is now exactly seven o'clock, and the, um, public hearing requires that there be a public, publicly noticed, uh, which has been. It's been publicly noticed in the union leader on July first, two thousand and eleven, page D six, and I'll read the legal notice. Down at Goffstown Public Hearing, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing at seven PM on July eleventh, two thousand and eleven, at Goffstown Town Hall, sixteen Main Street, to accept a CPR assist device and related equipment valued at approximately fifteen thousand dollars from the New England Heart Institute. This notice complies with RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash C or E, I can't tell. One of those two.
Should be E.
It probably is E. Any person with a disability who needs a reasonable accommodation, please call four nine seven eight nine nine zero, extension one hundred. At least seventy-two hours in advance for arrangements, union leader, July first. So, with that, uh, I'm gonna turn that over to the chief, uh, to explain why we're here and having this public notice, this public hearing round.
Very good, thank you. Once again, I'm pleased to, to bring forward an opportunity for the town to accept a donation for the fire department. And tonight, uh, it comes forward from, from the New England Heart Institute, uh, they're based out of Manchester, through the Catholic Medical Center. Gifts from, from the New England Heart Institute, or we call NHI, in the past. In fact, in, I believe in two thousand and eight, uh, they donated a cardiac monitor defibrillator, valued approximately twenty-five thousand dollars at the time, uh, to be on the ambulance. In fact, that equipment is still functioning on the ambulance today. Last year, uh, the department purchased for the ambulance, what we call a Lucas tool, which is a CPR assist device, and it provides optimal compressions during cardiac arrest. And we've had that tool onboard now, and we've used it, uh, for the past approximately six months now. And although we haven't had a, uh, out of hospital, we call SAVE, uh, we, we've noticed that whenever we use the device, that, um, our treatments and medications are more effective, and we've seen, seen patients respond better. So, it just, I believe it's, in my opinion, it's a matter of time before we do have that cardiac arrest SAVE. Because, uh, looking at the condition of the patient when they arrive at the hospital is, is, is much better than, than what we've been able to do in the past. This device is, uh, practically, the value is approximately fifteen thousand dollars, and once again, NHI has always been a, a strong community supporter on projects like this. They've donated to Goffstown and several, several other communities in the area, uh, using, uh, their ability to fund, uh, equipment where, where in certain particular cases where, um, public funding is not available to go ahead and purchase this, this device when it's needed. Uh, right now, we have two frontline ambulances, so this would be able to, we'd be able to put this, uh, device on that second frontline ambulance.
So, we're here to accept this donation.
If it pleases the board's-
Okay, uh, does the board have any questions of the chief? Uh, if not, I'm gonna open it up to the public, to see if any members of the public have any questions or comments. So, I'll open it up to the public, the only person I see here is our esteemed Andrew, and just asking Andrew, you have any questions or comments?
No, it's all crystal clear.
Okay, so with that, uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we don't have to wait any, there's no restriction on the time.
Correct.
So, we can, uh, we can decide to accept this or not accept this at this meeting, so, do we have a motion?
So moved. Motion to accept the CPR assist device from New England Heart Institute.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you very much, chief.
Have a good night.
Do we need a chief or anything?
The only other item I do have, I have a, a request for non-public under hiring.
Right, okay, so, uh, do we have any other public business at this point?
I don't have any.
Motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three, paragraph two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, we're in non-public session.